Welcome, welcome, welcome to the first candidate debate for the McLean Grange. I would like to introduce to you our Grange president, Dana Fieser, to give the opening welcome to our audience.
I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight, and I'm glad you're coming to attend to hear our forum this evening. I'm hoping you can stay afterwards also to meet with the candidates.
So tonight, we are having, as you come in the door, you are given slips of paper. Please write out your questions. Janet Jordan is picking up the questions written out, and there she's standing up. Please give your questions to Janet, and she will bring them up, and we will ask the candidates some questions. We will have a timekeeper in the back. Candidates, Mr. Newman, back here, he will have a 30-second. When you're, we are timing your, this debate, you'll have 30 seconds, that's the 30-second signal, and then he will have a stop signal. Each question will be two minutes. The opening statement, he will give you three minutes apiece. So, thank you again for coming. Please remember to write your questions and give them to Janet Jordan. And at the end, we will have closing statements by the candidates, again, three minutes apiece, and then we will, and we want to end at an hour. So we're going to keep this concise and tight. Thank you for your cooperation. So, for opening statements, would you like to go first? Kelsey Holtz.
Sure. Hello, everyone. My name's Kelsey Holtz. I think I've met a lot of folks in the room, but not everybody here. Thanks so much for being here, and thank you to the Grange for arranging this. This is really wonderful to have a public forum, to bring folks in to ask questions. So, I have been in nonprofit development for the last five years, most recently as the Development Director for the Evergreen State College. I was their Development Director until I stepped back to begin my campaign. Prior to that, I led the capital campaign for the Thurston County Food Bank. We raised $3.5 million to expand the capacity of that organization to serve our community. So, I'm running for Thurston County Commissioner for, because there are three things that I really think that we can do to improve our community here locally, and that is to create sustainable economic development in our unincorporated areas. Number two is to preserve and protect rural and agricultural land and open spaces. And number three is to build a social service network that doesn't leave anybody behind. And I think very often, we treat those things as though they're an either-or proposition. We can have one, but not the other. And I think that we really can find ways to collaborate, collaborate between jurisdictions, have a long-term vision of where we're going as a community, and to be able to do all the, all three of those things simultaneously. So, that is why I'm running for Thurston County Commissioner. I am here to, of course, answer your questions, and I welcome those, and then I'm here to ask for your support and to ask for your vote. So, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you so much. I hesitate to say this, but if we don't mind holding our applause, so that we can do this concisely, thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Gary Edwards, I'm a lifelong resident of Thurston County. My family's been here 150 years. And I was your county sheriff for the last 20 years of my law enforcement career. I did 39 years altogether, three years in the Army, and I really thought that that was probably enough. But every time I talked with citizens in my neighborhood, well, after I had retired from being sheriff, there was a lot of concern about what was going on in Thurston County and/or lack of certain things that were going on, namely businesses and affordable housing, that type of activity that was being stymied by overzealous regulation. And I really felt that somebody needed to do something about that. And so, I decided that I would go ahead and run, having known all the folks, having put in all those years, I thought I could probably make some changes. There's some things wrong, obviously, that are the reason I'm running, and the straw that broke the camel's back was last fall, they laid off five deputy sheriffs and hired five gopher inspectors. And I really thought that was too much. So, that got me into it. And hopefully, during the course of this hour, I'll be able to explain to you in detail to meet some of your questions as to how that came about, why that happened, and why I think I would be the best candidate for the job.
Thank you very much. So, now we go to the two-minute questions. So again, this time, we'll start with Kelsey Holtz, and then subsequently, we'll start our new question with Mr. Edwards. So, the first question, Kelsey, you have two minutes. How can Thurston County better deal with homeless issues in Thurston County?
That's a great question, and it's an ongoing concern in this community, as well as many communities around the country. One of the things that I did when I first decided to run was to meet with service providers in the nonprofit sector, particularly in Olympia, which tends to concentrate the homeless population there, but talking about what can we do, what aren't we doing? Because we do have a great nonprofit community here, we do have good wraparound services, and yet it's not enough to solve the problem. So, something that I heard pretty consistently for them is that we do need more coordination, right? That we've got a lot of different service providers who are providing a lot of different pieces to try and answer that challenge, but that what we need is, is an organization that really is bringing people together to the table, holding them accountable for the goals that we've set for our community, and making sure that we're, you know, moving on down the road, that we are moving forward on this thing, and that we are improving each and every year. So, I think it's something that we can certainly address in a more robust fashion than we have in the past. The reality is that we see communities across the country achieving a functional zero homelessness is the term, and I think that we can learn from the good work that's being done in a lot of other places and bring those big, best practices to Thurston County to be able to solve that problem right here at home.
Thank you. So, Mr. Edwards, the question again is, how can Thurston County better deal with a homeless issue here in Thurston County?
I think the best way to deal with that is restart the economic engine here in Thurston County. We don't have a lot of jobs here. Jobs are continually being chased out of the county, and the best way to fix homelessness is to create jobs and make jobs available, make affordable housing. I don't know if any of you have went down to buy a building permit to build a place. It'll break the bank just getting the permit, let alone building the house. And we've got businesses that are leaving our community all the time. My best example, obviously, is Ritchie Brothers, and they moved out because of overzealous regulation. Now, we do have another business that moved in there, the freightliner business, but wouldn't it be great if both of those businesses were here? And they could have been if it hadn't have been for overzealous regulation. Now, as far as just the homeless folks that maybe have other issues, we do have a triage center that Bud Blake just got opened up here in Thurston County after his election. And without Bud, that never would have happened. I think anytime you're dealing with substance abuse and mental illness, and then you put that together with something like our new triage center, it's going to be a big part of the solution. Now, I do know that some of this is self-induced, and up at the Salvation Army, they've got empty beds there quite often. So, I think we need to worry a lot about youngsters, single mothers with young kids, but a lot of this stuff is self-induced, and without the proper mental health and drug treatment, then I really think jobs are the next best thing that we can give those people to give them some self-esteem. Hopefully, then they'll get into some housing.
Thank you. Next question, we'll allow Mr. Edwards to go first. The question is, currently in the Thurston County capital facilities allowance, they're talking about a new Thurston County courthouse. The money for the Thurston County courthouse looks to be around from $170 to $200 million. Do you support a new Thurston County courthouse? And where do you suggest we put this courthouse? Mr. Edwards?
At this time, I am not in favor of a new Thurston County courthouse, and I would question those figures. Anytime the government comes along and says it's going to be about $200 million, you might as well figure it's going to be $300 million. The spot that I've heard most for the location of the county courthouse is in downtown Olympia. I'm also told this is supposed to be a 100-year building. That same area is supposed to be underwater in 50 years, according to some. So, I don't see any adequate planning that is going in to solving a courthouse need or a courthouse solution. So, at this point, I'm not in favor of a courthouse. I know that over on the west side, there's acreage up on the hill near the existing courthouse, and if it was really mandatory that we do build a courthouse, I think there's property right up there, close by, so we don't have to move into the downtown area. Parking, the homeless problem, all those things come into play if you have a new building like that down there.
Thank you. Would you like me to read the question again, Kelsey, or should?
No, I think we're...
Okay. Do you support a Thurston County courthouse, and where?
Sure. So, I've had conversations with a lot of the judges, both that are currently serving and the candidates, and it's become clear to me that the courthouse that we have right now is insufficient for what we expect it to do, that it's outlived its useful life, and that at some point, that is going to become dangerous for the people working there. So, I think it would be a mistake on our part to wait for a lawsuit to compel us to build a new courthouse, and instead get out in front of the safety concerns that exist right now, and to start planning for where and how we're going to build that new facility. I agree, it's not going to happen tomorrow, that's for darn sure, but we should be making plans, laying plans right now to make that happen. In terms of where the courthouse should be, I'm not settled on that myself, and I am open to discussion and, yeah, I'm open to discussion on any great ideas that people have on where we should build that courthouse. The reality is that it's going to be expensive. There isn't going to be a cheap option for that courthouse, and so if we're going to invest taxpayer dollars in that facility, we need to make sure we are getting every bit of return out of every dollar that's spent that we possibly can. So, if we can generate additional economic activity, if we can have a net positive effect in an urban area, which I think we may be able to have in downtown Olympia, then I think it's our obligation to make sure that we're getting every bit out of it that we can. We're going to make a major investment. Let's make sure that the return is paying off for taxpayers over the long term. And also, we should be building a facility that will be viable for 100 years. So, we do need to be looking long-range, down the road, what are we doing to build a secure, stable, sustainable investment for the taxpayers of Thurston County?
Thank you. So, the next question, I believe, Mr. Edwards will go first. Impact fees on new houses are used by the city and county to pay for municipal infrastructure. What are your opinions on impact fees on new housing for Thurston County?
Well, I'm not crazy about impact fees. And the reason I'm not crazy about impact fees, if you think about when those particular properties were given a parcel number, some of them 100 years ago, maybe some 50 years ago, they've all been paying taxes for that whole period of time. What happened to that money? So, I'm not always sure that impact fees are the way to go if you really want to be fair to all parties concerned. Now, on occasion, we might need a fire department, we might need a police area or something like that, maybe towards a school. I'm not saying there isn't some area for discussion, but as a general rule, I am not in favor of impact fees.
Thank you. Kelsey, how would you deal with the issue of impact fees in Thurston County?
Certainly. I think there's a universal truth in play here, which is true around the country, almost no matter where you go, that the rates that we pay typically for utilities and public goods are not sufficient to maintain that infrastructure, right? Whether you're talking about the roads, water systems, sewer systems, stormwater, you name it, the electrical grid, the rates that we are paying are not going to be sufficient to even maintain those in the long run, which is why we're, we're looking at some failures across the country on a pretty grand level. So, so the idea that that money would pay for those infrastructure improvements and expansions just isn't going to happen. The dollars just aren't there to be able to do that. And the other reality that we'll see is population is increasing, or excuse me, population and the need for services is increasing much faster than our ability to pay for it, certainly out of tax money, or to even be able to build for it. And so, we are looking at a situation in which we have to find that money somewhere. And so, there are really two options, right? We can charge impact fees, which are charged to the developer who's working on the project, or we can spread that around the whole community and raise taxes. So, in my mind, I would rather see projects paid for by those who will benefit most from them from an economic perspective than to spread that amongst folks who really will not gain anything from that additional infrastructure investment. That's just not fair, in my mind.
Thank you. The next question, I believe, we will start with Kelsey Holtz. What is your opinion regarding the critical habitat or the gopher issue situation in Thurston County and how to deal with the controversy surrounding it?
So, I think we've got an opportunity facing us right now. The way that we determine to deal with the gopher, to deal with a species listed under the Endangered Species Act, is an opportunity to create systems, to create policies, to create procedures that work for the people of Thurston County. So, I think we can argue all day long about whether the gopher is cute enough to try and preserve or not, but the reality is, the federal government has made that decision, and it will not be the last species that is listed under the Endangered Species Act. This will not be the last time that we see this happen. So, we can either choose to, to learn from it and to create, as I said, policies, procedures, and systems that work for people and help people to stay informed and to understand what is happening. We should be trying to build systems that are transparent, that are predictable, that are responsive to the needs of our citizenry, and that is what we should be focusing on right now. Because, as I said, unfortunately, in the world we live in today, this won't be the last time. And so, rather than, you know, arguing back and forth about the merits of the animal, I mean, I don't particularly care for the gopher, I don't really have any thoughts about it at all, but the reality is that we should be focusing on what can we do to help the residents of Thurston County when they are negatively impacted by regulations like this.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Edwards, what is your opinions regarding the critical habitat and the gopher issue situation in Thurston County?
Well, let me say that over at Fort Lewis, at the impact range, where you hear all those explosions going off all the time, the gopher does the best over there, where the ground's tore up. It's the first animal that came back at Mount St. Helens after the Mount St. Helens eruption, and the same gopher lives here that lives over in Mason County, or Lewis County, or Gray's Harbor County, and it's not endangered in those counties. This has been a hoax perpetrated on the citizens here in Thurston County. The county commissioners went out and solicited the federal government to come here to list those gophers as a threatened or endangered species, which they are not. There is no science behind it. I would challenge anyone to try and come up with the information that they've used. I have a letter from our game department dated February 11, 2013, and it is written to the federal agency prior to the listing, and it states all the reasons why the gopher should not be listed as an endangered species. Well, since that letter was written, it's now, somebody's changed their attitude up there. I'm told you can't even find that letter, but I have a copy of it that I acquired from concerned citizens that work for the state. 16 pages long. I plan on bringing that letter forward, utilizing that in challenging this whole gopher process. And I can tell you, there is no science, doesn't make any sense.
Thank you. I believe, Kelsey, goes for the next question. What programs would you recommend to help protect and support small local farmers?
Certainly, I think I answered first last time, but...
Okay, so, Mr. Edwards, would you like to go first? Small local farms.
Well, tell me the first part of your question.
What programs would you recommend to help protect and support law, small, local farmers?
Well, probably getting rid of the gopher thing would be the first thing, and that'd make it a lot easier. If we had less regulation over every activity that takes place in Thurston County, it would be easier to be a farmer or in any business here in Thurston County. That does not just apply to the gopher. That applies to every type of regulation that you can imagine coming out of the courthouse. And most of them are all about revenue, and that's unfortunate, that we use punitive policies to raise money in Thurston County.
Thank you. Yes, Kelsey, what programs would you recommend to help protect and support small local farmers? Thank you.
As I said, one of my priorities really is protecting rural and agricultural land. I think that's part of what makes this community a great place to live. I think it lends to the quality of life for every citizen in Thurston County, and so it's something that absolutely should be a priority, which is why I'm concerned with managing growth and figuring out how we're going to do that over the long run, because the reality is, that's what we're trying to protect. We're trying to protect the agricultural land, the rural land, the open space. My father lived on a farm when he was a young boy, and if you go visit that farm today, you'll be standing in the middle of a mall parking lot. That has happened in other counties. This was in King County. That, I would hate to see that happen here, which is why, if the TRPC says that 60,000 people are coming to us by, what, 2025, we need to be prepared for that. We need to be planning now for how we're going to accommodate that growth and how we're going to provide services to folks. So, I am having conversations with farmers, with folks that are affected by these types of things, to ask, what can we be doing to support them and help them, help their land stay farms? And one of the things that's come up that was brought to me by a concerned citizen was looking at the property tax structure around farms and making sure that we are valuing farms as farms and not valuing them the same way we would a subdivision, for instance, because those are clearly two different things, two different goals there, and we need to be mindful of both those things. So, we need to be seeking support for local, small farmers. We need to be seeking ways that we can limit the impact of regulations, or particularly regulations that are made as one size fits all and really don't. So, that's something that we should continually evaluate, so we can make sure that farms stay in Thurston County.
Thank you. So, I believe this time it's Kelsey first. Most every watershed in the Puget Sound basin that has building development has suffered losses in fisheries and habitat. Are stormwater issues for development important in Thurston County? Kelsey?
Certainly. I would say that stormwater issues are important, period, for Thurston County and for every other county, but particularly as the stewards of the South Sound. We do have a responsibility to make sure, to consider what it is that we're putting into the sound, what it is that we're putting into groundwater and waterways and streams and tributaries that feed into, into the sound, because we do want to protect fish populations. That's another thing that I think makes this a wonderful place to, to live and work. So, I think that that's something we have to be really thoughtful about. I don't think it's limited to development, but I think the science pretty clearly shows at this point that non-point source contamination is a huge concern, right? Lots and lots and lots of small amounts of contamination moving into groundwater, moving into streams and tributaries, and then ending up in Puget Sound. It's something that we have to address if we want to make sure that we have salmon and shellfish and some of these species in the future. Otherwise, we will lose them, and that is, that is the reality.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Edwards, are stormwater issues for development important in Thurston County?
I couldn't agree more with Kelsey. I, I think she's exactly right. I don't know anybody that doesn't want clean water and clean air, and I think that's where adequate and proper regulation comes into play. I do think you can overdo it. I know out at Lake Lawrence, where I live, we created our own lake management district and taxed ourselves to the tune of several million dollars so far to keep our lake pristine. The county came along as we were putting this together and said, well, we already know what's wrong is the septic systems are causing nutrient contamination into the lake and causing growth of algae and such. Well, we paid for a study, not the taxpayers. We paid for that study, and they did a dye study and an aerial photography study with infrared. And what they found out had nothing to do with any septic. They didn't even find any septics that weren't working properly. What they did find was a lot of lawn fertilizer. So, even though they, they claimed they knew what they were doing, they did not know what they were doing. So, we need to look at that kind of stuff. We need to question government when they come along and say, this is the problem, and look into it and see what really is the problem. So, I agree with Kelsey. We need clean water, and, and we can't do enough hardly to keep it clean, but there's reasonableness involved.
Thank you. Yes, I believe this time I'm supposed to ask Mr. Edwards. Yes, because it is a large part of the Thurston County budget, should we expand or decrease the Thurston County Sheriff's Office? Mr. Edwards?
Well, you're probably, you're probably thinking I might be biased a little bit. Yes, I am biased a little bit. We have the same size sheriff's office today that I had in 1994, and the population by the, of the county is up about 60,000 people since then. And it's way underfunded. If you compare Thurston County to any county in the state of Washington, it is the lowest number of deputy sheriffs per thousand population served in the whole state. So, law and justice has not received the priority that it needs, and because of it, we're lacking in enforcement areas that we need and working with people, because the law enforcement community should really be there to help and be available to help, rather than just responding to the most serious crimes that we face, especially in today's day and age where we're going to be faced with homeland security issues. It's coming, whether you want to admit it or not. It's developing everywhere in the country. Local law enforcement has the best chance of identifying potential problems, way better than the FBI or some federal agency, because the local law enforcement officers know all the community and the players.
Thank you. And I want to remind the audience, if you want to write your questions, raise them up. Janet Jordan will keep collecting questions for you, and she will hand them to me. So, again, Kelsey, because the Thurston County Sheriff's Office is a large part of the Thurston County budget, should we expand or decrease the Thurston County Sheriff's Office? Kelsey?
Certainly. The reality is that the numbers that Gary cited here are absolutely accurate if you don't take into account the fact that we do have city policing agencies within our borders. So, the growth in the county that we have seen has existed primarily within those cities. So, we have seen an increase in the police forces in Olympia, Lacey, and Tumwater to address those population increases. We, Thurston County, unincorporated Thurston County, is not going to get easier to police, right? I mean, as cities absorb, absorb their urban growth areas, what we're left with is a fringe of a very large county, and then pockets in different places. So, before we throw as much money as possible at the idea of making sure that we're safe from every threat that could ever occur, I think what we need to be looking at is how can we collaborate with the other law enforcement agencies within our community to make sure that we are providing overlapping services and ensuring that we've got good response times, that we've got good availability of officers to address issues when they're needed in the far-flung areas of our county? I'm not a law enforcement professional. I would not presume to tell an officer how to do their job, but I do think we need to be looking at where we can make those smart investments to make sure that not, we aren't just policing more, but we are policing better, that we are giving officers the tools that they need to do their jobs as well and as, as efficiently as they can, and again, looking at where we can build efficiencies in by collaborating with other jurisdictions within our community.
Thank you. Next question, I believe, goes to Kelsey. Okay. So, this question is rather esoteric. It says, what does diversity look like in Thurston County in the future? Kelsey?
That's a great question. I don't know who wrote that question. I don't know who wrote that question. I don't know, would be the short answer. I don't know exactly what the people who move to our community will look like. I don't know what their preferences for lifestyle or living arrangements or, you know, rural or urban, I don't know. But what I do know and what I hope is that we'll have a, a broad mix, right? Because in my way of thinking, that is what makes Thurston County an extraordinary, extraordinary place to live and work now. And I hope that that is something we will continue in the future because we do have amazing cities within our borders. We also have a wonderful and rich unincorporated area. I hope that we continue to attract folks from all different places and all different backgrounds and all different lifestyles so that we do have farmers and folks that prefer rural lifestyle living around folks that prefer more urban lifestyle because it is that sort of juxtaposition of the two. It is that interplay, I think, that makes this a really interesting place to, to live. So I hope that we will continue to do that in the future. But in terms of exactly what that, that would look like, I don't know. But I have hopes for, high hopes for as diverse a population as we can attract.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Edwards, what does diversity look like in Thurston County in the future?
Well, I guess that could be diversity of, of culture or racial diversity, housing. I'm not exactly sure what the question really wants, but I could envision that we could have farmers, for an example, and that those folks would have their development rights purchased from them, very much like we did down in the Nisqually Valley some years back when it was decided that they wanted to protect that pristine area from development. So they purchased the development rights from the owners of that property. And then they went on to be farms and, and grow produce. And, and so from a business perspective, we could have that type of thing so we could sustain our agricultural activities here in Thurston County and provide enough food resources for the people that come here. And as far as racial mix, I suppose you could talk about Fort Lewis bringing in a lot of different folks and maybe retired people from Fort Lewis. We've got the college that brings in a lot of diversity. I would expect all those people will continue to come and we'll mix cultures in with that. And I, I think it'll be a lot like it is today, only more.
Thank you. I believe I'm, we'll ask Mr. Edwards this time. So many people want to put more money into law enforcement in Thurston County. How would you pay for that, Mr. Edwards?
If we would ease up on the businesses, on overzealous regulation, allowing our economic engine to get going again, and by that I mean allowing a certain amount of building, allowing people to add bedrooms to a house, a garage to a house, and outbuilding, let their business grow. I would use as an example Latin Cider Mill over in East Olympia. If you go talk to Carolyn Latin over there, she is struggling against overzealous regulation. It makes life miserable for her. She can't expand her business. If you go down and talk to the Medicine Creek Winery, Jim was a dentist in our community for a lot of years. For the last 10 years, the county has almost put him out of business through overzealous regulation. And so we need to address that type of thing is, is a good start.
Yes, Kelsey, some people want to put more money into law enforcement in Thurston County. How would you look toward paying for that?
I think the reality is over the last few years, we've seen a steady increase in sales tax revenue, according to the Thurston Regional Planning Council. And that hasn't been enough to alleviate a structural budget deficit at the county level. We still are ending up with less buying power each subsequent year. As the population continues to increase, our need for services will increase faster than our ability to collect taxes to pay for them. So that is something that we will have to address and address very careful, carefully. The reality is there isn't going to be an easy answer for this. It's going to be, this will require a lot of hard conversations and determining what are our priorities as our, as a community? What are we willing to fund? Where do we want to put our most substantial investments? But to, to think that an increase in sales tax revenue will be enough to buy our way out of any budget challenges we have, it simply isn't going to be true. We're going to need to do more than that. And so at that point, we have to consider, are we, are we cutting services? Are we raising revenue? We can look at every possibility, but we will have to make some hard decisions around that in the future.
Thank you. So Kelsey, I believe it's your turn to start. Is it important to you to work with other jurisdictions? How do you see yourself working with other jurisdictions here in Thurston County?
Absolutely. And something that I've said a number of times already is I don't think there's any challenge that our community is facing today that will be able to be solved by one jurisdiction alone. We will have to work together, one way or the other. And I don't care, I don't care where you live, I don't care what letter's after, you know, whether you're one side of the aisle or not, if you're left or right or wherever, this is our community together. We will move forward together, one way or the other. We can move forward proactively by planning, by setting priorities, by making sure that we're moving intentionally in the direction that we want to go, or we can fight each other the whole way. But I think that, that is really going to be critical, that, that collaboration and cooperation. So I'm very proud to have been endorsed by the mayors of Lacey, Olympia, and Tumwater, as well as about half of those city councils, as well as elected officials and former elected officials from a lot of different jurisdictions. Because the reality is, I'm starting now. I'm not going to wait till I'm elected to start developing those relationships to build trust, to be able to have those difficult conversations and make sure that we can move forward into the future. So I'm working on that right now and I, I hope to put that to work for the citizens of Thurston County.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Edwards, is it important to you to work with other jurisdictions? How do you see yourself working with other jurisdictions?
I see myself working well with those other jurisdictions. If you will take a look at my website, there's about 800 people endorsing me on that website. I've got Republicans and Democrats, not just one party, Republicans and Democrats and independents. And I think you'll see that as your sheriff for five terms, having been elected as a Republican in this county five times, that's quite an undertaking in itself because it is a Democratic county. But in reality, you have to be able to work with others and have a record of working with others to run that type of an election success. So I would have you take a look and see that Brad Owen is endorsing me and Ralph Monroe is endorsing me and a lot of people in between. And the South County mayors are endorsing me. So I, I don't know what that means. I think we've got a little partisan activity going on there maybe. But I think I'll work well with others. I've got a proven track record of working well with others and I look forward to continuing that.
Thank you. I believe I'm supposed to ask Mr. Edwards this time. How would you suggest that Thurston County deal with a land use dilemma of agricultural land versus housing developments here in Thurston County? Mr. Edwards?
Well, I think I mentioned that down in the Nisqually Valley, we maintained that agricultural ability by purchasing those development rights from those individuals. And I think that's the way to go. I am certainly not in favor of taking through regulatory action. So if we're going to take, we need to compensate. I'll just let it go at that.
Yes, thank you. Kelsey, would you like to respond to that, please?
Certainly. And I think I've brought up a couple of times now that I think that agricultural land is absolutely critical to the quality of life in Thurston County. So it's something that we need to maintain, both from a local food perspective, from a, you know, growth management perspective, from a quality of life perspective. I think there's a number of great reasons that we want to do that. And so that's something we're going to have to be intentional about because again, if we don't protect and preserve that land, we will lose it. I think that the idea that development has been stopped in Thurston County is sort of ridiculous to me. There are, I think, four housing developments going in with, within about five miles of my house and I live in the unincorporated county. So that is still continuing and happening today. And, and that is a sign of growth, right? That's great. People want to come to Thurston County. The word is out that this is a wonderful place to live and that trend will continue. But every single one of those housing developments used to be forests and used to be wooded. And so we have lost that and we will lose some of that. And that's the natural progression of things. But if we want to maintain any of it, we're going to have to be thoughtful about protecting it. And so that's what I'm interested in doing by having long-range, forward-thinking plans and making sure that we're sticking with those and that we're continually reevaluating our, our progress on maintaining the things that are important to us.
Thank you. Okay, Kelsey, next question. In South Thurston County, there are so many special issues. Are there any issues in particular that you would like to address for the South County? Kelsey?
Yeah, I mean, I would say the question that I probably get most often is, how do you feel about the gopher? And its various iterations? And the reality there is that people are upset and people are angry. There are a lot of folks who have been put in situations where they don't understand what's going on, they don't feel that they were told. In the conversations that I've had with folks in South County, there are some consistent themes, which would include, I wasn't told, the rules changed, this wasn't explained to me, I didn't understand, and that type of thing should never happen. We should be making sure that no matter what changes we're making, policies we're making, regulations we're making, they should be clear, they should be transparent, they should be accessible, the decision-making behind them should all be clear and transparent and accessible as well. And we do need, I couldn't agree with Gary more that if we're going to take, we need to compensate. We need to find a way to address those needs of residents who are negatively impacted by the regulatory changes that we need to make. And so that is something that we absolutely need to address going forward and we need to do a better job there.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Edwards, regarding the South County, how would you deal with it?
Well, I'm not sure it's strictly South County. I think it's almost rural county versus maybe the incorporated areas. So it'd be more like unincorporated versus incorporated. And I think that there is a way to deal with that, but it has to be done fairly. And one of the things I mentioned earlier is buying out development rights. I, I think that's one way to do it. And you have everybody participate in the purchase of those development rights. And that way, it maintains that quality of life for everybody in Thurston County. So I don't really see us as a big difference, although there's usually some land use issues and some property rights issues that are more egregious in the unincorporated area. And that's probably where I would put my focus and try to alleviate those type of discrepancies.
Thank you. I believe it's Mr. Edwards' turn to go first. What are your preferred strategies for protecting the environment? Mr. Edwards?
Well, when you say preferred strategies, I guess, first of all, I'm a realist. I, I was born and raised here and I'm telling you, global warming is a reality. I've, I've seen it in my lifetime. Where I live, the ice used to get, you know, that thick on the lake when I was a kid. Those times have changed. The lake doesn't even freeze over now. So I do think when it comes to protecting the environment, you have this global issue. And where do we go with that? Is that a carbon issue solely? Then what about the streams running into the creeks and the rivers and into the Puget Sound? I just think that it's a total package that we always need to be aware of and be aware of what we're doing. But I can tell you that Thurston County allowed a residence to be built out by Lawrence Lake in a drainage area and they allowed the septic tank to be put underwater. I know everybody's going to look at me like, you're kidding me. No, only underwater three months out of the year. And I would make sure that type of thing doesn't happen because during that underwater period of time, there's raw, not sewage floating out, but raw septic, untreated septic that's going into the groundwater and down into the lake. And that kind of thing won't happen if I'm involved in it.
Thank you. Kelsey, what are your preferred strategies for protecting the environment?
I think there are a lot of reasons that massive investments have been made around the country in education, in public education, in sharing the impacts of the, the decisions and the choices that people make every day. Gary brought up fertilizer, you know, using fertilizer on a lawn. That is something that we wouldn't be able to regulate our way out of. In many cases, though, when we tell people, do you understand when you use fertilizer on your lawn, particularly if it's in excess amounts that runs off into groundwater and it ends up in the sound, for instance? Those are things that most citizens are responsive to. People want to do the right thing. And so I think public education is a huge part of it, just helping people understand the impacts of the things that they do every day. The other piece is making sure that we are planning for the reality of the world we live in today. And I'm glad that Gary mentioned climate change because as a public institution, we have an obligation to make sure that A, we're planning for that eventuality, and B, that we are demonstrating the values that we hold as a community. So making sure that when we're building and we're making investments in building, that we're building in a way to, to limit our environmental impact, limit our impact on the grid, that we're making those choices today and representing that for our community and within our community. Because I think that those are the, number one, the most visible decisions that we'll make as a county government or as a government. But number two, that again goes back to helping us make sure that we're building assets for the community that are resilient and sustainable over the long term, which is absolutely critical when you are investing taxpayer money, in my mind.
Thank you. So Kelsey, I believe it's your turn to start. Are there specific climate change issues that you would want to address in Thurston County? Kelsey?
Gary brought up sea level rise, for instance. I think that that's a, that's an eventuality that we need to be prepared for and we should be preparing for now, particularly given our physical location. I think that there are any number, I'm trying to figure out exactly where to start. But we should be thinking, we should be looking at the best available science, right? The science is becoming more and more clear on most of this. And so we should be reaching out to other communities who are, who are doing similar work but are further down the road than we are and saying, what's worked for you and what hasn't worked? What can we learn from people who have already made some mistakes so that we don't make those same ones? And how do we commit to, to building a community and building a future that is sustainable over the long term, right? We, these are realities that we will have to deal with. We cannot, we cannot ignore them and so we need to be prepared. We also have, the county has a huge role to play in emergency management. And we've seen, you know, dramatic weather patterns increase, we've seen wildfires increase, we've seen a lot of these things happen that will have an impact on our budget and we need to be preparing for now to make sure that we can provide for the needs of our citizens should one of those things happen here in Thurston County. Because more and more, it's not becoming a case of if, but rather a case of when. And so it would be irresponsible on our part not to do that planning now and to ensure that we have plans in place to be responsive to those new realities.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Edwards, are there specific climate change issues that you would want to address in Thurston County?
Oh, if I could wave a magic wand, maybe one of the things I think would be great is if we gave a tax break for proper insulation of your house, for an example, and, and try and save energy in that regard, not only in the heat, but in the winter as well. I think efficiencies with motor vehicles, for an example. I don't know, it always bugs me to see an Amtrak train go by with five cars on it. How come it doesn't have 10 cars on it or 25 cars on it? Because it doesn't use that much more fuel. So I think there are things that we can look at on our smaller level, if you will. I don't think we're going to control. I don't think we're going to control global warming from Thurston County, but we can do our part.
Thank you. And one of the last questions before we, one of the last two questions. Okay, I believe I start with Mr. Edwards this time. So it's another stormwater question. Do you think that stormwater regulations in Thurston County for housing developments need to capture 100% of the stormwater from the building process?
Is that, is that talking about under construction?
Yeah.
Under construction? Yeah, I don't want muddy water running in the creek, so I guess, yes.
Okay, cool. So, is that done?
I guess. I mean, I, I don't need to drag it out. I mean, yes, I, I'd like to see the creek run clean.
So, Kelsey, do you think that stormwater regulations in Thurston County for housing developments need to capture 100% of the stormwater from the building process?
I'll agree with Gary here. I think that, yes, we need to. It makes the most sense to be able to utilize natural infiltration and native plant species and the sort of natural hydrology of the ground to be able to capture and filter stormwater. Because the alternative to that is, is either dumping that on your neighbor so it's somebody else's problem, which isn't a very nice thing to do, or building stormwater filtration systems, right? Building something to actually clean the stormwater for us. And the ground does a real nice job of a lot of that. So I think that putting it to use to the extent we can really makes the most sense.
Yes, thank you, Kelsey. Last question before we give the closing statements. Many people are concerned about the Port of Olympia and their recent actions. Do you have any thoughts about the Port of Olympia since they are a part of our Thurston County?
The Port of Olympia, I think, is going to be, and I had an interesting conversation with the Marine Terminal Manager recently, that particularly as we look at Thurston County and the Thurston County government's role in emergency management, that the Port of Olympia will be one of our greatest assets in a catastrophic emergency locally. Between the Marine Port in downtown Olympia and the airport in Tumwater, those will become absolutely critical to us should I-5, for instance, become impassable, either to the north or to the south. And so I think that we need to make sure that we are maintaining those assets because they are community assets. They will be very valuable to us in the long run. I think that the port and the community around it need to continue to dialogue about what is the best use for those facilities. They are absolutely critical to have in our community at this point, and I think that we need to make sure that we are making the highest and best use of those that we can for the good of, of everyone in Thurston County.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Edwards, the Port of Olympia is a part of Thurston County. Do you have any ideas or suggestions regarding the Port of Olympia?
I think it's a vital part of our economic engine, and I really think we need to keep the port as a functioning assistant with other business activities, I guess, to be partnered with, with some of the business activities that we have going on. Because I think it's part and parcel with how our community functions. So I'm very supportive of the part, of the port and its endeavors, I guess, broadly.
Thank you. So for closing statements, each candidate will be given three minutes for a closing statement, and then afterwards, our president will give the final word. Kelsey, would you mind starting, please, for your three-minute closing statement?
Sure. Thank you again, everyone, for, for being here. One thing that I really love about this community is that people turn out for a forum on Thurston County Commissioner candidates on a Tuesday night. So I really appreciate your time. I appreciate you being here and asking questions and taking an interest in what's going on in your local community. Because as we all know, it's absolutely critical to our future. I think that the decisions that we're making now at the county level will impact generations to come in our community. And so we need to make sure that we are making decisions that represent and demonstrate our values as a community and that we are continuing to build, as I said, sustainable community assets over the long run. I'll reiterate that I really think that we can create sustainable economic development in the unincorporated area. We can do that. There is more that we can do there. We can make sure we're protecting and preserving rural and agricultural land and making sure that we keep small farmers in Thurston County because they're part of what makes Thurston County great. And we can make sure that we're building a social service network that doesn't build, doesn't leave anyone behind. We will continue to have challenges around how to best serve folks in our community that may have mental health issues and substance abuse, abuse issues that are experiencing homelessness. And we need to be responsive and nimble as we figure out the best way to address those, those issues in the future. So I really, again, appreciate you guys all being here. I look forward to working with the other jurisdictions in Thurston County to build a county government that is responsive, transparent, and accountable to the people of Thurston County. So again, I'm here asking for your support, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards, closing statement?
One of the things we talked about tonight was financial issues. That seemed to play a big part of this. And I would like to make sure that we're making good financial decisions in the future. Because in the past, we haven't made the best financial decisions. Just as a couple of examples, when the voters told the county commissioners twice not to build a county jail, and when I retired in 2007, I told the commissioners, "Don't build a county jail because the Nisqually tribe has a good business plan. They're going to build a very state-of-the-art facility, and it's going to alleviate your overcrowding," which they did, and which the county went ahead and built a jail, about $60 million, and then let it sit for about six years, almost. So I think there's plenty of money if we make smart decisions. The Tyson Fish Food Plant, that plant was bought 15 years ago. There's about $10 million tied up in that, and the county still owes it, owns it, and it's not being utilized. It's just sitting there empty off the tax rolls. The Maytown Gravel Company won a $12 million lawsuit against the county. And I think those are kind of bad decisions that are being made that affect our ability to have adequate revenue to do the job. So along with getting that economic engine started again, I really think if we make good, solid decisions, that's one of the reasons I'm very concerned about that, what I call a $300 million courthouse in downtown Olympia. They're talking about cleaning up on Capitol 8. They're talking, that could cost a couple of hundred million dollars to deal with. So we've got some real problems to deal with in the future. I would like to see that those problems, problems are dealt with properly and efficiently and save money in the process, not waste money in the process. We've got a history of wasting money, and that's kind of what got me into running for this office now, was the waste that I kept seeing. And I just couldn't handle it anymore. So I would ask that, I think I've got the experience to do the job. I would ask for your support and your vote. I'm not going to make a lifelong career out of this. This is a one-time shot to get in there and fix some things. I'm not trying to enhance my resume or start a new career. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have concluded our candidate debate. We want our president to say the final goodbye. We ask you to think about becoming a member of our Grange. We need membership, we welcome membership, and now our president will give the final goodbye.
Thanks, Lisa. I first want to start and thank the candidates for taking time out of their evening to spend the time with us to discuss the issues. And also, I thank everyone that has come tonight. Now, this has not been put together by one person. There's been, there is a bunch of us that have done many, many jobs to make this happen. So I want to say thank you to all of them right now. And thank you.